All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Here.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Here.
Treasurer Davis.
Here.
Secretary DeBarty.
Here.
Trustee Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Landau.
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Here.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Onto Tab A, Approval of the Minutes. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of April 23, monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Support, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Questions, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to, we're going to be going into a closed session. I would like to entertain a motion to recess the meeting and go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Yes.
Secretary DeBarty.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee Landau.
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna move into closed session now. I would like to entertain a motion to reconvene the meeting.
So moved.
Support?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move Tab M to current business. To make a motion to move to Tab M to current business.
Sure. Do I hear our support to move Tab M to current business?
Support.
Support. Any discussion on that?
Tab M.
Tab M is the contract approval? It was our closed session discussion. So we're gonna move Tab M up to current business?
Tab N.
Or, I'm sorry, N, I'm sorry.
Tab N.
N. N as in Nancy, I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor of moving Tab N up to current business, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees ratify the proposed three-year agreement effective July 1, 2019, continuing through June 30, 2022, between Washtenaw Community College AFSCME Local 1921 and the Washtenaw Community College Board of Trustees. I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion on this item? Yes, Dave?
Just as a matter of public record, I'd like to thank all the people who participated in the bargaining. It sounded like it was a collaborative effort that came to a good resolution, and I'm happy to support this.
Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milliken.
Yes.
Treasurer Davis.
Yes.
Secretary DeBarty.
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher.
Yes.
Trustee Landau.
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are now at citizen participation on the agenda. First up, the WCCEA. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Good evening. A couple of items, please. First of all, I want to publicly thank Elizabeth Connor, a member of the faculty, for the outstanding faculty address she gave at commencement on Saturday. I was unfortunately not there, had other obligations, but I've heard great things about it, and it was much appreciated by all who heard it. I've heard from family, from friends, people who were there, and so I just want to publicly acknowledge her address. And the second thing is, I just also publicly wanted to express my condolences to Rose for Joe's death and her family's loss. We all have lost loved ones near to us and understand and appreciate all that you're going through.
Thank you.
We're sorry.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, Ruth?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you tell me how many grievances and arbitrations we have with your association?
Sure. We have, excuse me, I've got allergies here. We have two grievances in process right now. One, they're both in arbitration. The one, the arbitration was heard in the month of April, so we're waiting on the arbitrator's decision. We have another arbitration that was put in abeyance because of the members' ill health and long-term departure due to that, and we are in the process now of getting that scheduled. We don't have a date for it. And we also had, recently had to unfortunately give the college a cease and desist letter regarding unfair labor practice.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I have one slip here for a Marie Wood. Would Marie like to come up with her comments?
Okay, so I'm here because of Tab M. This is regarding the technology update and proposal. Didn't really have a lot of time to prepare anything, so I just wrote up something really quick. I am here because a few hours ago, I learned that WCC may be outsourcing their IT department. While this may, while we have little to no details, I made sure I dropped everything I was doing to be here. Those of us in IT, such as myself, know outsourcing is, it seldom brings positivity to those that are currently working those positions. I do not work for WCC, but as a spouse of someone that does, it would affect me as well greatly. Learning what could have happened has already caused a massive strain on the IT department. There is an employee with an ill wife who depends on the income. There is an employee who had an ambulance called at 5:30. None of us have any details on what's happening, and it's causing a lot of stress. Everyone is now on edge and scared. I am scared. For a school that prides themselves on hiring those educated here, and a school that has billboards up saying that people at WCC are employed, outsourcing should not be a consideration, and I really hope that this makes it through to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Are there any other public comments at this time? Okay. Vanessa, were there any written communications?
There were two.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to monthly reports, Tab B. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as listed. Do I hear a motion to approve the recommendations?
So moved.
Second? Okay, any discussion on the recommendations? Bill, would you like to comment or add anything on this? Or, I'm sorry, VP Veltre?
Noted.
No? Okay. All right. Any questions or comments on this? Yeah, go ahead.
Always have questions.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that there are no new positions here? Is that true?
I'm not sure I follow, Trustee Hatcher. You mean as far as replacement versus new?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. And the full-time hire and support staff of student and academic services is in counseling and career planning. Does that mean that person is a bona fide counselor, or just, are we using that phrase generally? It says support staff. It says counseling and career planning.
No, that's, that's an OPT.
It's an OPT, okay.
At the counter.
All right. And I think that's... Yeah, those are my only comments.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved. Approval?
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Tab C, the financial report. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial report for April 2019 as follows. Do I hear a motion to approve the report?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Support, okay. VP Johnson, would you like to add anything here?
Sure. There, so for this month, consistent with prior months, is that the college continues to be on track with the forecast that we presented to the board at the March retreat. Our revenues are trending about $1,005,000 above budget, but right on track. Tuition revenue is doing well. Our spring/summer enrollments right on budget and about on par for the last year. Our property tax revenue is trending better than budget because of higher assessed values, which we had included in our forecast, and our investment income is doing better than planned as we continue to work that. So revenue is above budget but on track with forecast, and expenditures are right on budget. So on a year-to-date basis, about $129,000 better than budget. Budget about $106 million, so right on track for the year. So we fully expect the college to have a surplus as we had forecasted, about $1.5 million for the year.
Okay. Go ahead, Ruth.
Are there the year-to-date part-time vacancy savings? So there are fewer part-timers?
There, this has been a trend, budget versus actual part-time administrative.
Administrative.
Administrative. Faculty part-time is actually above budget, and that's offset by lower load, but on net, they're about right on budget if you balance off that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor of accepting the report, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to Tab D, the facilities report. VP Johnson, would you like to add anything here?
Really draw the board's attention to three projects on Page 2 of 3, the LA Chem Hood repairs. This is a significant item that is up for final board approval, and we are in the phases right now of planning with the faculty, the staging of the hood replacement. As you might imagine, this is quite integrated, quite complex. We want to minimize the disruption within the classroom, and yet there are 20-plus hoods that have to be replaced over three floors. It's very intensive. It's behind-the-wall work, and so we're in that phase now of trying to optimize how we do the least amount of disruption within the classroom, and we really appreciate the efforts that faculty have put forth to try to work with us as we try to get this done. Majority of the work will be done over the December break, but we are gonna try to do some work in this little narrow window between when the UA is finished and when our fall classes start, and there might be some minor disruptions at the first week or two, but we're still trying to figure that out. But I wanted you to know that that's a major project, and it takes a strong cooperation with faculty to get that done well, and we really appreciate those efforts.
Are some of these chemistry classes, are they offered on Saturdays?
They vary, right, but for facilities to do their work, they would need access to those for extended periods of time, meaning over multiple weeks.
Oh, okay.
These are builders repairs. Are there also elements being replaced in the course of this work?
So the actual hoods are not being replaced. It's all the guts within the hoods, and it's all the air handling systems related to those hoods so that they can work well that is actually being replaced. So there are no new hoods being installed. It's to replace the innards of all 20-plus hoods so that they'll work well.
So we'll benefit by some new engineering and technology that'll be incorporated?
We actually will, and in fact, one of the, so they're not only gonna work much better in terms of just their draw, right, of air, but also the energy savings. One of the key elements is an energy savings element, and so we have actually built that into the design.
Great.
Second area to draw the board's attention, still on that Page 2, you'll note at the bottom lines 32 through 5, there's a series of items for the Health and Fitness Center. So we have a very concentrated, very aggressive plan. We're gonna have a shutdown the first week in June. We usually have it in August, but this year it's in June because we're trying to resolve both the women's hot tub issue as well as the hot water problems that we've had, and so we are attacking this with six major projects, and Facilities Team along with the Fitness Center Team, along with our members, because it takes a cooperative effort once again to make this work, and so that's a very major project for us that's happening the first week in June. And then last but certainly not least, on the top of Page 3, just to bring the board's attention, an update on the SEMCOG non-motorized pathway. The board might recall that through the good work of our board member, Dynamick Knight-Morton, we were able to attain through the county grant money to help fund this pathway. That money would have cost, net-net, our end of it would have been under $100,000 of costs with the grant picking up the majority of the costs. Well, the bids came back, and the county's running this whole project. The bids came back, and they were $160,000 in excess of what all the engineering estimates that the county had. So the county came back to us. The county says, so do you want to pick up the difference? And we said, well, even if we wanted to, we don't have authority to. It now exceeds what the college has authority to do without board approval. So we said, we're still very interested in the project, and we would ask you to go back and see if you can, one, reduce the costs, and, two, see if you can't find some true incremental funding to help offset this increased cost. So we still remain committed to the project and are hoping we can reduce the costs. I do think in the end, it will still cost the college more than what we had talked about before, and if so, then we'll be back to the board to ask for approval, but we're not ready to make that recommendation yet.
I just want to add that there is a transportation meeting next month, but I'm trying to get in touch with the planning commission, or not commission, but meeting committee, excuse me, to see if they have some extra money to pick up this cost. So I'm working on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
When would you anticipate this potentially coming back to us?
I think it's at least two or three months.
So after the beginning of the new fiscal year?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to public remarks from the Board of Trustees. Would anybody like to say anything? Go ahead.
Yes, I'd just like to say that the commencement Saturday graduation was just excellent. I was very pleased with all of the speakers, student speaker, it was very enlightening, and really just, you know, it was worth being there, and I'm just glad that I always have this opportunity to go through this, and every year's different, and every year I see the excitement on their faces that they finally accomplished something. And there was one person that I noticed right away in the student section. He was surrounded by all these young 18, 19, 20-year-old people, and this person was, I'm quite sure, up in his 80s or so, and he walked across that stage, and it was just so, I could see the excitement in him that he had finally accomplished, that he had graduated, and it was really enlightening. I made a comment to my colleague next to me. I said, you see this guy sitting out there? This is great, because it was just, he was the oldest person there, and it was just really enlightening for me. I felt really good.
Yeah, I'd like to say something real quick, too, about that. It was, for me, because I work in the retail industry, and a lot of the staff where I work are young. I call them kids, so I'm, geez, seem like kids to me. I'm old, but there was one young lady that works with me, and she graduated. I forgot her name, so I rushed to shake her hand, and I startled Board Member Trustee McKnight-Morton here, and, but she come here from Central Africa three years ago, and she enrolled in the STEM program here. And she approached me about maybe four or five months ago, I believe, asking to, if I could help her, you know, proof her essays, because she's trying to get into U of M, you know, and further her educational journey, and I did what I could, and I turned her over to a good friend of mine who happens to be a professor at U of M, and so we worked with her. And so, the long story, so to see her journey come from Central Africa to come here, to really know the language, the culture and all, and just fit in and get her education under her belt, and then to see her cross the stage and give her a hug and work with her, you know, you can just see the windows of opportunity opening up, and that's what I love about all the students that are here. I just happened to run across a parent, actually, who has a son that works here, and she felt comfortable enough to let me know his own educational journey and had revealed to me that he absolutely loves working here. He loves working with the different staff that we have, the student population, because he himself has, you know, gone through the, as it's called, University of Hard Knocks to get where he's at. He has a master's now, but understanding the past that other students have when they come through the community college here, and that itself is absolutely wonderful. I had the opportunity to speak again at the honors convocation, and I mean, I have much respect for all the students that, you know, through blood, sweat, and tears, and they've reached a level of honors, and to be able to address them and see, you know, the, just the look in their faces of how proud they are of themselves and one another, of the status that they've reached, and, you know, it's just, it's moving. It's inspiring, and I wanted to share that with you all, that I truly appreciate all that we do as a collective whole to make sure that an adult student or a high school student, whoever comes through our doors, that we do all that we can to make sure that they're put on that right path and they're heading in whatever direction that, you know, that they have set before them, and we're always here for them for that, and I wanted to say thank you so much for that.
Go ahead, Ruth.
I have two things. One is, as I was sitting there, I was thinking that I've been retired for 10 years, and there certainly is no student in the group there that I ever taught, and as I was heading to the elevator, a gentleman put his arm around my shoulder and said, thank you, Dr. Hatcher. I really enjoyed your class. So it takes longer than two or three years sometimes. The other comment I wanted to make, and I apologize I didn't do my homework, but we had a presentation by students about a drug that prevents...
Narcan.
Narcan, and we talked about that, and I heard just on NPR or something that libraries, librarians were being entrusted with this, and I wondered if we're making any progress for having it around campus, or the security has it, or it's available for students?
All our officers and patrollers carry it.
Okay, not the librarians?
No. I can't speak for the librarians, but I think so.
Generally, Ruth, it's because in public libraries...
Yes, I'm sure.
They have a significant homeless population.
Of course.
And I don't think we have that problem here significantly.
Well, but, you know, Kurt Vonnegut said the only people he trusts in the world are librarians, so I thought maybe... But if we're prepared. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Go ahead, Dave.
I just wanted to say thank you, I think to the marketing department. We now have a Washtenaw Community College sleeve that can append to the back of your cell phone, and you can put your driver's license and a credit card in there and just stick it in your pocket when you go out to a bar or go dancing or something, and I know all the young people...
You going out dancing a lot?
A little bit, a little bit. I know a lot of young people make use of this, and my wife has one on her phone and makes use of it all the time, and I'm happy now, as of tonight, to have the Washtenaw Community College one on my phone, and there are useful phone numbers on it, public safety, counseling and career planning, financial aid, student connection, so making this available to as many students as possible, I think, is a real treat, and I thank the marketing department for jumping on this. I assume it's the marketing department.
Any other, I'm sorry.
And Vanessa for making sure that they got the message.
Oh, okay.
Any other board comments? I would just like to take a minute to say one thing to address the public comments from earlier. I am somebody who has worked in IT for over 22 years. I started out my career, well, you could say I started working on computers in a paid capacity when I was 16, because I was a receptionist, and being the young person in the office, I was the computer person. But my first job was out of college, being a help desk person. I was a desktop jockey for a while, and then I was promoted up to server administrator. I've racked and stacked a lot of servers. I've been a data center administrator. I've been a WAN administrator. I've configured routers. I've done web programming. I've done a lot of things in IT. I have, you know, a lot of experience. One of the things I experienced kind of in the middle of my career was a RIF, Reduction in Force, at the University of Michigan, when they wanted to combine two big IT departments. One was BFIT, the Business and Finance IT, that is, and the ITCS, the IT Central Services. Both divisions were, I don't know, maybe 800 people or more in each, and this was a merger. They wanted to centralize IT services. They wanted to go to hosting services. I mean, so many changes, so much upheaval. And I was at the place where the lady commented, where it was, oh my God, am I gonna have a job? Oh my God, how am I gonna make my mortgage payment? Oh my God, what the heck is gonna happen to me? And I remember that stress. I remember the anxiety. I remember the sleepless nights, and I think fate has brought me to this position here today as chair of this board when this college needs to make a major IT transition. I think it's fate that I'm here, because if there's one thing I care about, it's the IT workers, and one thing that I am stressing with staff is there's gotta be some benefits here for the IT worker. They are an unsung hero in our everyday job, and, you know, if, when things are working well, you don't know the IT people exist, but when things are broke, you know their name. You know their first name, and you know who to call, right? So IT people are very special, and I want to make sure that we take care of it and that this transition is comfortable and as painless as possible. So one thing I'm gonna stress throughout this process is that we have benefits for the people. That is going to be in my calculation in all of this. So I don't have any good, solid, concrete answers for details right now. We're at the very beginning of a long process, but I can tell you the process will be long. I don't know, at least a fiscal year, maybe, you think? More? I don't know, but we're talking about a long transition period here. So I know that there's stress and that there's worry, but I'm also here for you two, and we're gonna try and get through it as best we can, and that's all I got to say about that. All right? All right, go ahead, Dr. Blanco, with your comments.
Thank you. Well, the board has an outline of my comments, and it's actually good news. Right, so for our first straight year, a WC student is a recipient of our Jack Kent Cooke Undergraduate Transfer Award Scholarship, and this scholarship awards a bachelor degree student up to $40,000 annually for up to three years. This year's winner is Ahmed Galib, and he credits, there he is up there, or here. This year's winner is Ahmed Galib, and he credits, there he is up there, or here, he credits his win to the inspiration he received from all of his instructor, and he thanks them for the profound impact they made on his life. Our Washtenaw Voice also won some awards. Again, they're outstanding. You've probably noticed our paper, just every time I see that issue, I'm impressed. They received 11 journalism awards this year from the Michigan Community College Press Association. The awards include second place in general excellence and first place awards for the best news story, best personality profile, and illustration. I'd like to congratulate the entire Voice team and its advisor, Judy McGovern. They do an outstanding job. Digital media arts students won five video awards this year. The media arts won five first-place video awards at the Michigan chapter of the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, 41st Annual Student Production Awards, held in late April, and that was right here in our Towsley Auditorium. This brings our awards up to 26 awards over the past eight years for our video production program. And Matt Zacharias, Don Kierfert, I'd like to thank the professors for doing outstanding job. Sports Department, our WCC Sports Department, our soccer team, women's soccer team, won the Women's Midwest College Club Soccer League Spring Tournament, defeating Oakland University?
Wow.
Wow.
Yep.
Wow. And our men's baseball team won the Golden Grizzlies Classic, beating, wow, Saginaw Valley State University in the championship game. So don't mess with us. Okay. Our WTMC student was, congratulations to Zanab Al Khali on being the finalist for Washtenaw Community College's 21st Annual Young Citizen of the Year Scholarship Competition. She will receive $1,000 and will be recognized at a reception later this month. And I had the privilege of meeting Zanab at our, she attended one of my president's lunches. So it really was great to hear her story and that she took the time to have lunch with me. Staff, congratulations. Goes out to Lauren Towns, our college relations coordinator in the Division of Advanced Technologies and Public Service Careers, and Anthony Webster in career and technical education. He's our career and technical education student success specialist. And I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to meet either two of these gentlemen. I mean, their energy just exudes from their eyes, from their whole body, and they love what they do. They really connect with the students. And I'm so pleased that they were recognized at the Michigan Occupational Specialists Population Association. So that was great. Maze, honors convocation, thank you so much.
That's me.
Trustee.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much for speaking. We really appreciate what you did. And trustee Davis, it was a great, it was a great evening. And our speaker, Vivian Wang, she shared her story at that event. And last but not least, of course, is commencement, which many of the trustees already addressed. It was a beautiful ceremony. And Abby Elwell was our speaker, as you know, amazing, bachelor's associate's degree and her high school diploma the same day, as well as Elizabeth Connor, our faculty member, did outstanding jobs. And really, this is a good time to, I know, I know we always say thank you, and thank you seems like two words that everyone says, you know, like, thank you, thank you, thank you. But you know what? Really, thank you, because this is the combined effort of everyone that works here. And some of us you see, and some of us you don't see. But it's all of us together that create a successful graduate. So, and thank you, board, for helping us steer this ship in the right direction.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Good. All right. Okay, moving on to tab E. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-20 tax levy of 3.3763 mils for operations as submitted. The 3.3763 mils will generate approximately $58,574,234. I said that without saying "and," I'm very proud. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move.
Second?
Support.
Okay, any discussion on tab E? Questions? All right. Oh, go ahead.
So Bill, is this after the Headley adjustments?
It is.
So this is final?
This is final.
Okay.
Would you like to add anything else?
No, the rate's the same that we presented at the last meeting.
And is this rate the same as last year?
No, it's slightly lower because the Headley adjustment continues.
To roll it back.
Because the assessed values went up so significantly year over year, the impact is a further reduction to the rate via Headley.
So the rate is rolled back, but it's the maximum that we can assess?
It is the maximum.
And it will, because of the significant increase in assessed valuation throughout the county, we will still realize, even with the lower rate, an increase in revenue.
Yes, and we have reflected that in the proposed budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBardi?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I just would like to thank the taxpayers for their support of Washtenaw Community College. We try our best to be one of the best community colleges in the state, if not the country. And that's because of their support, we're able to do that. And we hope every day we fulfill their expectations.
Quick question. As secretary, do I need to sign this to fully authorize it?
We actually have a separate form that we'll be bringing you to sign on board motion at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we already approved that. Okay, moving on to tab F. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-20 budget plan as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Support.
Support, okay. Any discussion on tab F? And Mr. Johnson, would you like to add anything yet?
No. Same as last month.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just want to confirm and point out to people, because I believe this is so, that our tuition rates for in-county residents, the taxpayers that are so generous to us that live in the county, we're holding the line and not increasing the tuition rates for in-county residents.
That is correct, for both on-campus and online rates for our in-county residents.
Okay. I just want to thank the administration for doing that, and I think it's a large part of why we continue to have such trust from the voters in the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBardi?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yeah.
Trustee McNamara?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to tab G. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a construction contract with Quality Air Services of Brighton, Michigan, in the amount of $746,505. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Sure, I'll move.
Second?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on tab G? VP Johnson, do you want to add anything?
No, I think I made my comments about just how important this project is, and just to move forward.
Okay. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary DeBardi?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight-Morton?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to tab H. The recommendation is that the board approve the amendment to the board negotiating Team 2019 WCC EA Part-Time Adjunct Teaching Faculty Contract, which removes former Dean Good and replaces her with Dean Brandon Tucker. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on tab H? Okay, let's see. Is this a roll call? Yes. Vanessa, please call the roll. Oh, there's no roll?
No, no roll.
Oh, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving on to tab I. The recommendation is that the WCC Board of Trustees approve the reappointment of Jan Gensheimer and Stuart E. White as Washtenaw Technical Middle College Board of Directors with terms ending April 2022. Background information is in the back of the action page. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion on tab I?
I've served with both of them on the TMC board. They're great contributors to the board, very valued members, and highly support their reappointment.
Well, you can't argue with being like number one by Newsweek Magazine and all that.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business, tab J. VP Hearns, would you like to tell us about the sabbaticals?
Well, we have sabbaticals presented for, they're all actually this time presented for the winter 2020 semester. We don't have any fall sabbaticals presented. It's a diverse collection of sabbatical work based on the work that the faculty have done. We had a committee that met that was led by Jean Miller to approve and review these sabbaticals. And I sat and stayed on that committee, and so we proudly recommend these for board approval.
Okay. Any questions for VP Hearns? No, go ahead.
Just a question. How many sabbatical requests did we have, or do we usually have?
You know, we usually, we have slots for six. We actually only have four, so these are the four that came to the committee, that were reviewed by the committee.
All right. Moving on to tab K, approval of Examity Remote Proctoring Contract. VP Hearns, do you want to tell us about this?
Yes. So we currently use a service called Examity to proctor online tests for our online courses. And the faculty and the team at CITL has been looking at the services that are offered through Examity, doing a lot of training with faculty, and we've actually increased the use, which is a good thing, of using that software because it means we're proctoring more tests online. And a lot of our creditors, not creditors, articulated institutions require and want to see the rigor of those tests and the use of a proctoring system. But that service comes at a cost, and we're presenting a proposal to exceed, not to exceed $75,000, because as we've increased the use of Examity, the costs have gone up as we actually proctor more tests.
All right. Tab L, the Campus Cooling Tower Replacement Contract. VP Johnson, would you like to add anything here?
Yes, please, thank you. So this, our cooling tower is 20 years old. It is time to be replaced. We are bringing this to the board today because there's a long lead item order for a lot of the parts. The anticipation is that upon board approval, we will go ahead and order those parts after this cooling season this summer. We then would begin the work on the replacement of the cooling tower this fall to get it ready for next summer. And so we had, as you've seen in the bid sheets, we had seven bids, so a lot of folks had bid on it. You'll also note there was quite a wide range of cost differential. The proposed contractor is professional thermist out of Howell, Michigan. We have thoroughly vetted the credentials of this firm and feel very confident that they do the work for the college.
It seems like I've heard about this before. Was it when VP Flowers was here about the cooling?
Yes, we actually were investigating it at that time, and VP Flowers at the time had decided that it could wait a little while, but it is now a time.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay. Moving on to tab M, the Technology Update and Proposal. Mr. Johnson, again, want to tell us about this?
Yes, I will begin it while he sets up for his presentation. So in June of 2017, our college experienced a complete network shutdown. You might recall that. It was three days. We had a technology outage, and the impact on the college was quite significant, from everything from new student applications to fall registration to people to attend classes either online or even their assignments that were on ground. And what happened is that was like a wake-up call, because when we had this three-day shutdown, we at the time couldn't fix it. And I recall trustee McKnight-Morton was the chair, and I called her panic-stricken and said, "We have a shutdown. I don't know what to do. Here we are." And we talked about calling Campus Works. So because we are both familiar with Campus Works through, you know, the years of being on the board and my experience. So we did. We called Campus Works, and they came, and we are grateful they assisted us to identify what the problem was. Well, after that, you may recall, the board, and I actually, but you, I mean, we both agreed, but you did ask me, "What are you going to do? We can't do this. You know, tell us about this shutdown. A three-day shutdown. What do we do now?" And so that was what sparked a complete assessment of what we were doing in IT as a college. And I want to say this right now, this is not any indictment on our staff. It has nothing to do with their work at all. So when I talk about IT, I'm talking about IT, the technology of IT. So what happened is, you know, you might recall, so we, first thing we did, we had a, I called Campus Works. After they came in, I called them back in. We came back to you. We asked for a contract for them to give us an assessment. I don't even know if we had to, I don't know if they charged us enough to come to you, but we did an assessment. And at this retreat, and if you don't have a copy anymore, I can get you one if you want it, back in January of 2018, and here's my copy because I work from it, is the, this was the actual assessment report that we received from Campus Works. And so it became like a blueprint for us to start looking at and seeing what we needed to do. So after we took a look at this assessment report, and we looked at what we could have either hired a CIO, but based on this, we did not think that that was the right move at that time. And so we thought, okay, let's contract with Campus Works. At one thing we knew for sure from the shutdown is we needed campus security, you know, information security. So we came to you and said, "We'd like to contract with Campus Works." And in this contract, first of all, Campus Works is a consulting firm. So they, what that means is they help you do your job, okay? So we contracted with Campus Works, and through that, we had a CIO from Campus Works, a CISO, and both of them have done a great job, especially the CISO, plus 400 hours of, I don't know what you call it, management, managed services. So what that means is when you have to do some projects and you need help to implement the projects, we had 400 hours that we could use of extra consultant time with the company. Well, what we found in doing this is that 400 hours was not even nearly enough because there was so much that work that we needed to do, because many of our systems are legacy systems. And what I mean about that, and this is, again, not indictment on anybody, but when we started, you know... I mean, and the good people we have here, they put these systems in place. And so what happens is, just like we lost one of our key people last year, one of our key IT people, and when they create these systems, these legacy systems, when they leave, the system goes with them. That, you can't have that in an organization. Not only that, many of our systems, because of when they were written, are, we're having a hard time aligning them or transferring them to our banner system, which is our whole ERP system. So you might recall, in this retreat, the one we had in March, and I gave you the PowerPoint again, because that night it was dark in there, I didn't like what you, I didn't like your PowerPoint, so I gave you a copy so you could look it again at your convenience. But this slide in particular is the one I want to talk to you about. Okay, sorry. Am I taking your speech? This is the slide I want to talk to you about. And you may recall, in that conversation, oh, here, you want to know where it is? It's in there, but you have this in your handout. So you recall Peter Bosco is the individual, the CIO, who gave us this report. And what he shared with us at that meeting is, see, Alucion banners in the middle, those are all the systems aligned with it that you see in those little clouds all the way around there, and Bill might want to add more to it than I am. But what really makes me nervous as a CEO is that box, because that box over there are all the legacy systems that we have in place, that we still have, that we have to, and somehow, am I using the right words, align, or put into place with our banner system? I don't know if I'm using the right technology terms, but I get the point. Anyway, so that, now, that's just now. Technology continues to change. I don't have to tell you this, I mean, you know. I mean, in the eight years I've been here, I don't even know how many cell phones I've had. I mean, they keep changing all the time. Everything changes. I have it update constantly. So, when you're the CEO of a company, and you're thinking about that, you're thinking about these good people who work for you, and they are good people, which is why we want to take care of them. But you think about these good people who work for you, and you feel, you understand they're doing the best they can, but what's happening is the pace of change in technology, I mean, we just cannot keep up, no matter how many more people we hire, no matter how many, how hard we try, we can't. And the other thing that really concerns me the most is security. And the campus, you know, as far as breaches and all the things you're all aware of. So I worry about these things. And when we had this retreat, we shared, you know, how everything's connected to everything, the Internet of Things. And we're not an IT company. We're a school. I mean, we know how to teach. That's what we do for a living. We, we train people, we teach people, we provide opportunities for people. We are not IT experts. So Bill's going to give you a proposal that I would like you to consider. And, you know, it's a big decision. It really is. But as a CEO, I feel incumbent upon myself to give you what I think is a good recommendation. Now, I really want to hear what you think about this. And we are going to have a period of time where, you know, I don't want to cut his whole thing down, so I'm talking too much, but I do want, you know, this is a good time for conversation. We do want input. It's a big decision, but it's one where I feel that it would be something that we really need to give very, very serious consideration to. I don't want to get to the punchline first, but I'm going to, because, because of what you said, trustee Fleming, our employees are very important to us. So we wanted to be sure, and I wasn't even sure until this morning, we wanted to be sure that all of our employees would be offered a position with this company should we, and we'll tell you more about this, all right? I just want to get to the end, because I know everybody's going to be wondering what's going to happen to them. I wanted to be sure they would be afforded a position with this company, Alucion, which they have over 3,000 employees. And if they didn't want to accept that position with Alucion, that they could take advantage of a transition plan. And we will explain the transition plan in this presentation, but we've tried to be as generous as we possibly can be, because we do value every single person. And that, that's all I'm going to say. I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and if you have any questions through this, please feel free to ask.
So today, it ought to be good to recap some key points that we went through over the last two years. We had two more. So I'd like to bring the board back to kind of the context.
I'm wondering, in the interest of the video record of the meeting, if you should speak into the microphone, or if that matters, in terms of the tech?
Does that matter? It matters? Okay.
That, that way, where people want to review this, when we post it online, they'll be able to hear.
Great, thank you very much, yes. So today, I thought we would start by doing a recap of the last two board retreats, kind of the context, right? Kind of the state of our IT here at the college. Kind of go through the IT structure that we have that is trying to meet the needs of the college, and then to walk through the proposal, why is it that we're recommending a technology managed service? And then lastly, then, to say, if we were to go down this path, if the board were to approve this proposal, what does it mean to our IT staff? And then last but not least, what's the process for the board that we're recommending for input, for deliberation? And we think that's very important, as President Blanca said. So with that said, again, this has been a two-year process. Frankly, the, kind of the wake-up call was back the spring of 17, when we had a three-day outage. And the three-day outage was really caused by some new software we had. They had a vulnerability that the software provider said wasn't real, but it was real. And we had all the best minds thinking about that, and it took us a while to figure that out. But what it told us, as President Blanca said, is, what is it we don't understand about our IT environment? And how do we get better at that? And how do we make sure not only that doesn't happen again, but what else does it suggest about the ways that we're not meeting the needs of the college? Not just around reliability, but around all the technology needs. So that sent us down the path, the assessment, which the board has gotten. The first retreat that we had, which then talked about the results of that assessment and the priorities that we had around that, whether it be from the way that we manage our projects, the IT security, our banner system, the way we're not using our banner system, a number of things. We then brought to the board the contract with Campus Works to help us start to tackle those things. And that really has brought us here to today, about saying, "We've tried really hard with our great IT team, with the help of Campus Works, and we really don't believe doing more of the same is the way to get the campus to what it needs on a sustainable basis for technology." So with that said, what is the background? We're a big campus. I mean, we're relatively speaking, we're not a big campus, but we have a lot of folks doing a lot of things. We have a lot of devices, right? And so we have over 3,500 computing devices, 450 separate software applications, 250 virtual servers that are maintained, I mean, you, you can see the things here, including a 24/7 help desk. So we're a big campus in terms of the number of devices. We're a big campus in terms of the amount of software that we help to support, both in the classroom and administratively and for our students. It's very integrated, very complex. Speaking of complexity, right, our ERP system, Enterprise Resource Planning System, is Banner. At the core, that's everything to do about the student, how we serve our students from a transactional standpoint, financially, all the financial transactions, and human resources. That's that center box, evolution. But around that box are all the other systems that we have that have to integrate with Banner for us to serve our students, our faculty, our staff, our community in a seamless way, a reliable way, in a secure way. And those clouds off on the side are all things that are in the cloud, and more and more of our services are moving in the cloud. That makes it even more complex, more integrated. And as President Blanca said, what doesn't, what these legacy systems here are all systems that when they, when they were written, and these are all, in most cases, custom-developed systems, they were state-of-the-art. We couldn't find software out in the open market at the time that could meet our needs. Our IT team developed those. But in many cases, those are five, 10 years old. The staff that wrote those are no longer around. Many of the systems to which they run on are old systems that can no longer be supported, yet they need to run on those old systems. So our options are to rewrite those or buy new software to replace with those. Over 20 systems that, just on that alone, take significant effort, and every time we spend time on the Blue Box, we're, we're taking time away from our precious IT resources to help address the forward-motion needs of the college. And that's part of the dilemma that we're in. Another dilemma that we're in is kind of the organic growth of our email system. And Peter Bosco from Campus Works, you might recall, had gone through kind of how this has evolved over time. Each evolution of this system was the best thing to do for what we needed as to the new discrete item, when we moved students to Gmail, right? That, that's great. That's a cloud-based solution. However, to validate credentials for a student means you need to come back to campus, validate those credentials, go back out to the cloud service. There's a lot of complications, and I could go on and on about this. The point of this slide is, is that our e, our email environment for faculty, staff, students, community members, emeritus, is complex. This all needs to be rewritten. This all needs to be put on a unified platform that is going to perform well, that's going to have the right, the right security, and the right access for our students and faculty. Significant work needs to, to be done here. The other thing, and again, I'm just kind of picking out the highlights from our, from our meeting, security has been, been a big issue for, for higher education in general, the world in general, but specifically in higher education, as you heard from Bill Ochark, our CISO, that higher education's becoming more and more of a target. And so we, we have taken the first strong step of assessing what our security environment is. And this is on, under the NIST model, which is the model which is, is recommended by DOE. We just, we just got word from our auditing firm, Raymond, that DOE is most likely, in this cycle of our audit, is going to require that Raymond come in and do an assessment of how well we're doing against these NIST standards. So thank goodness that the college had the foresight, with the board's direction, to go higher campus works, to get a CISO in here, and to do this assessment. This assessment is the cornerstone of those auditing procedures. We're on, we're on the forefront of this, and that, and that's good. But what it does tell us is that the college has significant work to improve our overall security environment. And that, and that significant work is not done by security folks alone. That is done by combination of security folks, the rest of our IT staff, both from a, from a development standpoint, from a network standpoint, from a systems engineer standpoint, and, and not leastly, the campus at large. A lot of these items on, on this, this assessment have to do with the awareness on the campus around security, potential events, and how to mitigate that. And that needs to become a bigger and bigger part of our campus environment around, around security. Yes, trustee DeBarge?
I remember asking this when this was originally presented to us, but I want to ask it again. The red line, is that where we are now?
It is.
And is there a recommendation in each of those areas where we should be?
There is priority around which ones we need to go after first. And realistically, you want to be out in the two and a half range across the board, but some are more important than others, and some build upon the others. So that's another area. So what are those risks, right? To remind, remind the board, there is a number. There's governance, there's, there's credential exposure, the application security risks, our mobile, our mobile devices, banner, banner in Oracle Security, protection of sensitive data that's at rest. And at rest, that means not just with, within our servers, not within our storage, our data storage facilities, not just at the desktop, meaning computers at the desktop, it could be on your mobile device, it could be paper that's sitting on a desk, it could be paper sitting on a counter in a student connection. So data, so data security at rest is well, well beyond data storage devices in and of itself. So a num, a number of critical areas that we, we have said, these critical areas will help move that red line out to more acceptable ranges. The DOE expects us to have a plan. The DOE will like that we've done what we've done, but what they're going to ask, what Raymond, our auditor, is going to ask is, "What's your plan? And how quick are you going to get there? What are the resources? And what kind of priority is this relative to everything else you're doing on the campus?" Because we at DOE, among other things, are worried about this, and we're worried about how quickly you're getting after this list here. It's really important work. So the projects, our governance, culture awareness, awareness development, I can't, I can't speak enough about those, those, those bottom two, culture awareness and awareness development. We've done great work here on trying to create, create that, but even with that good work, folks still fall prey to phishing attacks, right? And so we, we have a number of initiatives that, that we, we are starting to get after, but quite frankly, we're hitting, we're hitting a lot of capacity thresholds, because we have a lot of other projects, like the Blue, the Blue Box with the 20 legacy systems, like a new CRM system, like all the technology that's going on in the classroom. There are so many things that when you then say, "Well, wait a minute, we need to do these things." Yeah, we do, but we can't stop doing the things that need to happen in the classroom. We can't stop the things that need to happen the way we want to serve our students. So it's, it's both and, right? This is important, but not this at the exclusion of other things that are really important to the campus at, at large. You know, this is, I'm not looking at, asking you to read these 25 projects. These 25 projects were just significant projects within IT that had been brought forward largely by the user community to say, "When are you going to get this for me? I've been waiting for this for a year. I still haven't been able to get to it. Can I get on the list?" So this is the list, and we're doing our best to tackle this, this list here. And this, and this list is about three, four months old. I'm, I'm sure this list, that if I was to give you an update, it would be longer than this that's here today. So context, right? Context. So last but not least, we asked Campus Works to do an assessment of our overall maturity as an IT organization. So best, best practice would say that we would be at a minimum mature, right, and going to strategic. Where we are as a college, in Campus Works' opinion today, is still in a reactive mode, wanting to aspire to proactive, but not even there yet. And in large part, it's because of capacity. In large part, it's about not having enough skills at the right place, at the right, the right time. So to President Blanca's point, we took, we've taken this to heart and said, "We need to solve this. We need to come up with ways that we could solve this and bring those here to, to the board today." So that's context. So let's move on to the staffing that we have. So currently, we have 31 full, full, full-time staff here with us today. As, as we've mentioned, with the board's approval, we, we've had camp- So currently, we have 31 full, full, full-time staff here with us today. As, as we've mentioned, with the board's approval, we, we've had Campus Works on, on, on board now since, since last March, so a little more than a year ago now. We've made good progress, right, but it's limited progress with that. We also have, as President Blanca mentioned, four, 400 hours a year for each of the two years for help from subject matter experts to help with projects. Banner, Banner Security is a good example of that. We had, we used some, some of those hours for their specialists to come in to assess. So, where are we? How robust is the security of our, of our ERP system? Another one was to improve and leverage the way that Banner offers HR and, and, and payroll processing. So we've brought in an expert, we've worked with our HR and, and payroll teams in making progress. So, we, we've, we've done that. Now, we've been trying to work on this for a number of years. The last year is when we hired Campus Works. But over the last four years, including the budget that the board just approved for fiscal '20, we've grown our, our IT budget by 25%, 6.2 million up to 8.2 million. It hasn't been for lack of focus, a lack of attention, a lack of good effort by the entire IT staff that, that has brought us to a point of saying, it still isn't the right fit. It hasn't been for that lack of effort across the board, with the strong support from the board with resources with that. What else about our structure today? That even with that increased resources, that, that our technology project demand, the number of projects that come into I2IT every week, every month, it really outpaces capacity. Even with our best efforts, we just can't seem to get caught up for the reasons that we've spoke, spoken of. Security environment, it's more complex than ever, and it's not stopping. It keeps getting more and more complex. As it gets used more across campus, in more sophisticated ways, more integrated ways, that security environment becomes even that much more important. I mentioned DOE, so the regulatory environments are very significant. Every time that we have a potential breach, that we think that there's been a breach, meaning if I, if I fell prey to a phishing attack, and we think that some, that somebody used my credentials to go in and look of what's in, what I have access to in the system, we have to report that within 24 hours to DOE, right? So, in every one of those things that we and every other higher institution file, they follow up on. I mentioned Raymond has to now bring into their audit, right? What is WCC doing around, around security? Trustee Milliken?
What's the volume of reports that DOE receives from various institutions?
You know, I, I don't have a good answer on, on, on that. It's, it's really been, that, that regulation's been around for a number of years, but just within the last year or so, DOE has put an emphasis on compliance. So for us, it's probably less than one a month on average. If I had, had, had to guess, and I would say that we're about average in that, in that sense. So, many of our software applications have embedded custom applications, the Blue Boxes, the legacy systems. Most, most of those were custom. They, they're great. They, they really were what we needed at the time. But boy, it's going to take a lot of work to bring them up to state, to state of the art, as we had spoken of here. That, the other thing that, that we'll mention is that more and more of the, of the solutions that we want to use are cloud-based solutions. And that's good in many, many respects, but it also has its own realm of risk, both from an operational point of view, because you're integrating from a third-party source back onto our campus if data, if it's moving. So a good example is TouchNet, our, our payment system, that's a cloud-based system, or Blackboard, that's a cloud-based system. We are pushing data back and forth. That push of data has to be secure. That push of data has to be reliable, because the college is depending upon that. Our students are depending upon. When they go into the TouchNet system, that, that's an accurate reflection of what they've done around enrollment, the pay, the payment plan they signed up for, and the balance that's left. That all has to be managed. So, cloud-based solutions are wonderful in their respects, but it's not without a lot of duty responsibility on, on, on the part of the college, and more and more of our systems are, are going cloud-based. And last but not, but not least, the technology in our classrooms is significant, and that's great. That's really important. How do we keep pace with that? Right? How do we keep pace in terms of supporting faculty around the need of, of putting technology in the classroom, supporting that and keeping it secure for, for our, for our campus? How do we have process to vet that software, so it doesn't slow down faculty from doing what they want to do, and yet making sure that we can properly support it? That's a big job. And it grows every day, and we take that very seriously. How do we do that well? That's, that's what, that's what we need to figure out for us. So, the, the, the advances in technology, in our, in our opinion, that they've outpaced what we, what, what can be realistically expected from our current IT structure. And that structure is an IT staff of 31 strong professionals and supplemented with Campus Works' resource. We simply have outpaced it, and we need, we need, we need to answer that. So, what's the aspiration for the college on technology? What are we trying to solve for? There's a lot of things up here, and I'll, and I'll just pick out a few, right? I'll just pick out a few. In our labs, if you think about the technology in the classroom labs, it, it is just growing just significantly. And, and every time we put that technology, I mean, I could think across, across the spectrum of curriculum, the technology that's been put in there, that has to be supported. And it has to be supported not only from what happens in the classroom, but the infrastructure to be able to support that. The communication, the network, security, the licensing, just the licensing alone for software applications. We have 450 applications. Just the licensing alone for that can make sure we're compliant. I, I read every license agreement. Larry Barkhoff reads every license agreement. We challenge every single thing around intellectual property, around security, around copyright, on and on and on. Reli, you know, reliability, just doing that alone, right? I mean, just to pick one little piece of it. Now, what are you trying to do with it? What kind of data? Who's going to have access? Who is going to support it? Is it going to be faculty? Is it going to be IT staff? Just that alone. The point is, we don't want, we in IT don't want to be the obstacle for that innovation. We don't want to be the obstacle. We want to be the ena, the enabler for that, that innovation. That needs to happen in, in the classroom. We've got to find a solution for that. Line item eight, right? Our learning management system, LMS, Blackboard, right? We have a robust structure in place to help support a cloud-based solution. That includes a group from, from Peter, Peter, Peter Basile's group, and in IT. That's a strong partnership that's needed to be able to support a cloud-based solution to help faculty and staff to continue to avail ourselves of online innovation. And that grows every day. That's, that's really important for the college. About 25% of our credit hours come from online, and in large part, that's because of the quality of the course content, the quality of the infrastructure that helps to support the delivery of that course content, and the qual, the, the quality of the staff that helps to support that. That's really, really important as an example. I'll look at line, line 12, right? I, I can't tell you the number of times that I've heard, why can't I get access to the data that I need? What do you need? Well, I just need this, this, and this. Okay, well, that's from four different systems, and we have to get somebody from IT to figure out exactly what's needed, and then to build a report, and then the moment that we give you the report, because I know, because I'm, I'm as guilty as, as anybody, I say, this is really great, but can you, can you do this thing for me? Can you twist that report a little bit more for me? Sure. I'll put that on the list. No, no, I, I need that now, because now I've given this, this data. So, building out a strong, accessible data repository that provides the right data at the right time across campus so that folks can best do their jobs in serving our students and faculty. We've just scratched the surface on that. We've got a long, long ways to go on that, and we need to get there fast, because that's what the college needs. Student success in large part is understanding the data so we can put it in the hands who know how to use it to help our students. We really need to empower those folks to do their jobs. But just to pick out three, and there are many, many more up there, that, that is part of the aspiration for, for, for the college around technology. What are we trying to solve for? That's our ask, our aspiration. The timing, the timing considerations. So why, so why not? So why are we worrying about this now? Reliability is a, is a concern. We don't want a three-day outage again. We don't even want Blackboard to be down again. We don't want our TouchNet system to be down again. Cybersecurity issues. The increasing demands on technology. There's just, there's a lot of things there. The comp, the competition is strong. They're all starting to figure out how to serve students as well as we have, have been. It's important for us to stay ahead of that curve. And even with our best efforts, we, we just, we can't seem to keep pace with it. We, we just really can't. These strategies of the college, the, the strategies, the priorities that the board has really worked hard to develop and asked us to implement, more and more of those strategies have called for technology to, to be one of the enablers to help it. So we really need to work on that. And last but not least, that the contract with Campus Works will be up next March. We have to answer the question, what's next? Right? What's the structure that's best for, for the college? So we, we, we looked at three options, really. Those three options are, if we were to build out an IT team that's direct staffing, right? The 31 staff that we have now, what, what would that look like for us to be able to answer all those technology needs that we just kind of walked, walked through there? Second option is a variation upon the theme that we have now. Well, maybe we're, we, we don't need to be experts at all things. Maybe, maybe there are some things that we could put in the hands of those, that's what they do for a living. So kind of a mixed, a blended of, of a direct staffing model along with availing ourselves of, of experts for those areas. And then lastly, a managed service model, where in a managed service model, that the partner is 100% accountable for it all, 100% accountable for it all, and meeting the needs of the college at the pace that we need them to meet it for, and that we would have their assurance for. So those are the three models that, that we looked at. And if you look at it from, from the lens of, of, of three key, key areas, the academic student support area, from Banner, our ERP system, and then the, the infrastructure of IT, those three areas, and you looked at those three options, and you thought about, in all three options, how much would it cost to hit the aspirations of the college? What's the risk? What's the timing? And can it be sustained? If you thought about those three options through those four attributes, and we've thought about this a lot, for two years now, we've been thinking hard about this, you, you can see that, that we believe in option one, to re, to rebuild our, our current IT staff relative to what our budget is today, it would be very costly. If you look at that, and this is for the academic and student support, if you look at it, if we were to take our model and add more experts from the outside in those areas that we wanted to contract for, it would even be more costly than that, because that's a very expensive resource. And last but not least, in a managed service model, that we actually think that we can have some potential savings from our current budget around cost. If you look at time to achieve the aspiration, and just speaking of academic student support, very long time if, if we do it with our own staff, build out our staff, three to five years. A little less time if we were to supplement our current staff with outside help, and a much shorter time if we move to a managed service technology. If you look at the risk, I think the risk is very, very high when it comes to our own staff, for one principal reason. The IT professional market is an ultra-competitive market. It is really hard to attract and retain IT professionals at any price, much less the price that we pay at, at community college for compensation. So the risk is high, because it would be really, really hard to find all the right folks that you needed and to retain. It's really, really hard. Little less high, right? With additional consulting, but you're not going to reach out for consultants for everything, just for certain things, so it's still high. You've got to have a core team that you're able to attract and retain, and then a managed service, service, service as well. It's not the college's problem. It's a managed service firm, this is what they do for a living. They, they are going out every day and finding the best IT professionals in the world to work for them, and they're availing us of their, of, of their team to meet our needs as we dictate those needs each and every day. That's their job for us. It's not our risk. That's their risk. Trustee DeBarge?
So you're, you're saying the, the risk assessment is primarily issues of staffing with, people with the appropriate skill level?
Right.
Now, isn't there also, I would always think that there's some risk associated with having the work done in-house where we maintain more accountability over it, as opposed to a managed service which is outside? And if, wouldn't we potentially have to fire them? The data is outside our control? I mean, that just seems like we have more accountability or control with in-house.
And no, with a managed service, the software app and applications are still the college's. The data is still the college's. So we retain all, all, by, by, by contract, we have to own the software applications. We own the data, right? The only risk that we would have is in a managed service related to staffing, in, in that, in, at the point, if, if we went to managed service and then sometime in the future the college says, you know what, we want to go back to a different model, all in-house, right? That you have to make sure in the contract, which we make sure with the Lucian, that we have all the data knowledge rights that we have to have, so that in a transition period, so we, we will be able to immediately bring that back in-house to mitigate that, that risk of our knowledge. So, and then last but not least, and I'll, and I'll just use the, the top one there, for academic and student support, sustainability, right? It's, we're, we're in a very weak spot with our own team, for two reasons. One is being able to attract and retain staff, and two, that the tech, the technologies constantly change, and you have to move with that change. So, it's hard to sustain something if you're constantly having to go out and either retrain your own staff for that new technology, and the moment that you do that... And the moment that you do that, you have to take that really good IT professional and dedicate training time to them. Well, the college demands don't stop while you have them out in training, right? So then we have to have backup staff. We have the same skills as the first set up for training to keep the work going. It puts you in a very weak position from a sustainability view for that. Little less with outside consulting help because you take in the most critical things that you don't think that you can hire on your own and retain. And you place that burden on that expert firm. So it's less risk from a sustainability standpoint. And it puts us in a much stronger place in managed service. They're 100% accountable all the time for all the technology needs of the college. Not some of the technology needs, all the technology needs of the college. Puts us in a very strong position. And so the three areas that we looked at were the academic and student support, Banner, our ERP system, because that's the hub of what everything has to work around and through. And lastly, the IT infrastructure. And that's just not what's on the desktop, what's in the labs. It's not just the communication system, right? It's also security. It's the reliability. So, and that's significant. Now, you'll note that on our IT staff, that sustainability for that wasn't as weak because around some areas, there is more access to staff in the old market. So we didn't see as much risk around the infrastructure side as we did around the Banner side and the academic and student. But there's still risk there. So when we looked at it, this, it just was very clear to us that the managed service model was the model that we really needed to think most deeply about. It was very, very clear to us. So after we looked at it, both the direct staff and, that we really believe that the managed technology model is in the best interest of the college. As I said, they are 100% accountable. 100% accountability by that firm. All IT staff departments would be provided by the service provider. Now, as we just mentioned, the college still would have to purchase all software, all hardware. So the managed service contract still requires the college to retain the budget to go purchase the software. So what are the benefits for the managed service technology? So that they are required to maintain the adequate and qualified staffing to meet all our needs, both today and to the future. That they have to provide the on-demand resources. That if the college says, you know what, we like our blackboard system, but for this program here, we want to run this in Moodle. And so we need you to find us the resources that can help to support that whole mess for that program there. Under the contract, Alucion is required to do that. As an example for that. So they have to provide best-in-service delivery at all times. That has to meet both our regulatory requirements that we have and be fully compliant with all DOE regs. So that's a big deal. And that's going to be growing. That's not just, okay, we hit it, now we never have to worry about that again. That should become more and more rigorous, more and more onerous as time goes on. Right? That we have to make sure that the data security infrastructure. So a managed service that's part of what they sign up for. They get it, they understand it. Everything that they do, make sure that we have that robust. That they are responsible for putting in place a governance process that gives the college, the board, the comfort that all the IT decisions that we make are answering to all the criteria that we think are important for technology. Prioritization, security, resources, sustainability. All those really important things. That they have to make sure that all the technologies are made across the spectrum for that. So our recommendation is to go ahead with the contract. So the recommendation, the proposal that we have for the board is that we enter into a contract with Alucion. Alucion, as you might know, that they are the owner of Banner, our ERP system. We really view this as a sole source provider. So Banner, there is no other firm, no managed services firm out there that owns the code to Banner. And therefore, there is no other firm out there that can provide the expertise around the design and use of Banner on our behalf than Alucion. They're a software company. They're also a managed service company. They have two arms. We have the software side. We really need to have the managed service side to go with that. Banner is the backbone for virtually everything that we do. At some point in time, that activity, that transaction comes back through Banner. And so it is really, really important that we have a managed service provider that understands at the code level what Banner's doing and where Banner is going. Because we're not just making decisions for today, we're making decisions for tomorrow in the systems that we build. And as a result of that, that WCC will have access to the best-trained Banner developers. There aren't any better developers that know Banner than Alucion. And so through this contract, we have access to the best train. It's not to say that there aren't IT firms out there who don't have staff that have background in Banner. There are. There are many. But there's only one firm that not only has the best-trained staff, but they have access to the code and they know as a company where that system is going. It really puts the college in the very, very best position from an ERP system managed standpoint. Alucion has over 2,400 institutions alone that they provide software to. They have 160 higher education institutions to which they provide the full technology managed services. And of those 160, about 90 are our community colleges. And of those 90, three are here in the state of Michigan, including Muskegon Community College, who's been using managed services from Alucion for a number of years. And then that through this, that we're able to also extract the value. Remember that slide, and I think that President Blanca offered you the slide of Banner in the center and then all of the software is around it. Some are in the cloud and some are here on campus. That through the business relationships that Alucion has with all those companies integrate well with Banner, that we are able to avail ourselves as a college of cost efficiencies through the cost of software licensing of all those other softwares. And that's a value in and of itself that is tentative, a 15% savings on just the software cost alone. That because of the relationships that Alucion has with all those software providers that integrate well with Banner, which is crucial for us. There are just a lot of tremendous reasons for the basis for our recommendation proposal that we have. So what's in the proposed contract? What are the services that are being offered? And I've listed them out here. It's everything that we do within IT. I've lifted these names directly from their contract, but they're all things that we're doing today. The leadership, the strategy work, the academic application support, administrative application support. You can see the list here. A help desk service, our end-user service, our web tech services, security services, monitoring services, access to the Banner help desk itself at a much higher level than what we can get on our own to our own licensing is also really, really important. So it covers the entire gambit of what we do within IT, would be in this contract. The cost of the contract is 5.2 million a year. It's a fixed price for five years with no escalations. And it addresses 100% of the needs of the college. The services would start within about 30 days of if and when the board were to approve the contract. All WCC full-time IT staff will be offered a job with Alucion. 100% of our IT staff full-time will be offered a job with Alucion. There would be a third day, call it a transition, call it a startup period. So if, from when the board were to approve the contract to when Alucion would take over, there would be a startup team. That would be led by Alucion and would include all the key stakeholders on campus so that we all had a chance to say to Alucion, when you started 30 days, you better make sure you're doing this, and this, and this, and this. So it gives us time to make sure that they've got all the things that they need to know, that they can start to address when they start and they start hitting the ground running when they start. It also, the contract includes performance language around reliability, deliverability of services. And that's a really important element of the contract.
On the current WCC staff, the 31 positions that are currently within our in-house, if they're offered positions, would they be at comparable wage and benefit?
We don't know.
Do we have any control over that?
No. They, Alucion has about 3,000 employees, 24 higher institutions. So their needs are broad and vast.
And we don't know if those positions, where they would be located geographically that they're offered?
We don't. Here is...
But we could offer a buyout, or we could offer a package to give employees a choice.
Yes, and I actually have a slide that absolutely addressed that very point there. But here is what I can say, is that Alucion has said that they need to build a team here. Right? They are going to extend offers to every one of our 31 staff. You have to believe that many of the staff are going to have an offer to work on our company. Some might work in the offer jobs to work in other places. Some might be remotely given their skill sets. But you have to believe that many of the folks will be offered jobs to work here.
Trusty Mill.
In the same vein, if the college were to retain Alucion, how many employees would be resident and how many would be virtual? Do we know that balance?
We don't, but that's a really good question. But the large majority of their team are going to be resident here. They're going to live in our town. They're going to be part of our community. And so what they said is the large portion of their team that's going to support us will work and live here. Financial. So 5.2 million is a lot of money. So what it means to the college's budget? So I offered to the board two different views on that. One is what I call a steady-state view, right? So take our fiscal '20 budget for IT, which is currently 8.2 million. Add in 5.2 million for the Alucion contract. Back out, once the Campus Works contract is finished next year, back out the annual cost of about 800,000 for that. Back out the personnel reduction, right? So our staffing budget for IT next year is roughly $4.8 million for that. And then back out, remember I mentioned, there's a software synergy savings of just the buying power of Alucion. So we think steady-state, that our budget in IT will actually has the potential to go down about $600,000. Now, for next year alone, it won't be that case. We are not recommending to the board that we pursue terminating early our Campus Works contract. They're doing a great job for us. We think they need to stay here for the entire duration of the contract. They, so Bill Ochark is our CISO. In the price that we asked Alucion to give to us, that 5.2 million, it takes into account for this first year that Alucion has available to them the resources that we have under contract with Campus Works. So that's not a double dip, if you will, in that sense. They've taken that into account when they gave us that 5.2 million. But for this year, right, I would need to add back some costs. As you'll see in a minute, the proposal timeline, if the board were to approve this, is that our IT staff would remain WCC employees for the month of July. So you need to add back that cost for that. That's about $300,000. Need to add back the Campus Works contract because for this year, we want and need the Campus Works resource for the whole year. But we would back off one month of the Alucion contract because their services wouldn't start until the end of July, not on the start of our fiscal year. So net-net, it comes off to about 8.3 million, which is really close to our current budget. So we're budget-neutral for the current year in the year of transition, even with keeping the Campus Works contract for the entire year. So budget-neutral for the current year. And there's the potential savings of about $600,000 once we get beyond the year of transition. So what is the impact to our IT staff? Once, once again, just to say it again, all full-time IT staff will be offered a position with Alucion. It's a worldwide company. They have over 3,000 employees. They're a best-in-class higher education technology company, both from a software standpoint and from a managed service standpoint. Our team will have the opportunity to work with one of the best in the industry for technology. Now, for those employees that get the offer from Alucion and say, you know what? I really appreciate the offer, but that's not what I want to do. I really want to go do something else with my life. The college is proposing that for those employees who do not accept their offer, that we offer them a transition assistance plan. And it includes a number of elements. It includes compensation. It includes continuation of benefits. It includes support for them to go pursue another job. Resume work, works to get connected into networks for searches for new jobs, that kind of thing. And educational benefits. So let's go through the details. So the proposal that we have is that for those employees who do not choose to take the offer from Alucion and want to take advantage of the proposed transition assistance plan, if you have 10 years of service or more, that we would offer one full year of compensation and one full year of continued health benefits at the employee cost today. For that, if you have between five and 10 years of service, you would get six months of compensation, six months of health benefits. And less than five years of service, that you would get three months of compensation, health benefits. And in addition to that, through a best-in-class career transition supporting right management, that they would be afforded to use those services from right management. The average cost for, by the college on behalf of employees for that service alone is about $3,800. Per employee that handles all of that. $3,800 per employee then to develop themselves on that career transition service. In addition to that, we would like to offer to employees and their dependents the same benefits that they have today as an employee for a WCC education for five additional years, for five years. And that's true for all, it doesn't matter what, how many years of service that you'd have to get five years. Yes, sir?
Do you have a sense of how many of the 31 employees fall into each of those three categories?
I do. It's of the 31, I don't have the exact number, but it's around 12 or so, I think, have plus 10 years. And there is about five or six that have between five and 10 years, and then the balance have less than five years. And please don't quote them as exact, but that's kind of a rough approximation.
Thank you.
Yep. So we, as President Blanca said, this was a key element of us even coming to you with this proposal for managed service. We felt strongly that this transition assistance plan had to have two pieces, a guaranteed job offer with the best-in-class technology firm in the world, or, if you don't want that, a transition plan that has significant transition assistance, both in compensation, health benefits, career transition, and continuation of WCC education.
EAP.
And then thank you. And last but not least, employee assistance plan, which is something that's really important. So that to us is an integral part of this recommendation. We would not be recommending going to managed service without this. This is really important to us. So what's the estimated cost for those employees that choose to not take the offer from Alucion? So just to give you kind of a bookend, which is a basis for my 1-2 million up there, if every employee didn't take the offer from Alucion and did take the transition assistance plan, that would be roughly $2.4, $2.5 million. So my 1-2 million is just to say that I really do believe that a number of our staff are going to want to take the Alucion offer. So I don't believe it's going to be that maximum, $2.4 million, but it could be in the range of 1-2 million. And that's just a guess. I don't know. It's just a guess, but it's off of or that range. So how do we pay for that? Another element of our recommendation is that, as we know, that we believe that we're going to have a surplus in the general fund for the current year. We think it's going to be at least $1.5 million. I really do think we stand a strong chance of it being more than $2 million. So I do believe that we'll have enough surplus term in the current fiscal year that we would make a recommendation, if the board were to approve this managed service contract, and if the board were to approve the companion transition plan, that we set aside enough money to be able to cover the cost of the transition assistance plan, which I think can be funded through the surplus of the current year. We think that's an integral part of this recommendation. So the timeline, right? So I offer the board two timelines. This is the one that relates to our staff and the managed services contract, and then on the next page, it'll be around the board activities to really engage around this. So the month, the month, the month of June, that we really think that the board's going to have a number of assessment activities in. And that's the next slide that I'll go through that. Starting tomorrow, President Blanca and VP Belk and myself will be holding things starting at 9:00 AM with the IT team, a detailed session to walk through this recommendation, to walk through the details of the transition assistance plan. And at 11:00 AM tomorrow, we've asked Alucion to spend time with our IT staff so that we can start to get to know what the managed service model is, and start to ask them questions. So that's tomorrow. Assuming that the board were to approve this recommendation proposal at the June 25th meeting, there's, here is kind of what the cadence of activities would look like. As I mentioned, we think the month of July is an important month, that startup period prior to when the Alucion contract formally starts, that we need to engage with Alucion around all the critical things that are going on at the college in technology, from faculty and staff, and make sure that Alucion's building the right team for us when they start. So that's the month, the month of July. And then running on a simultaneous basis, June 26th, the day after the June 25th board meeting through July 9th, two things would happen. The Alucion team would be doing their interviews so that they know the skill sets of each of our IT team. At that same time, our IT staff would be meeting with VP Belk's team and getting our IT staff to understand at an individual level what their transition assistance plan benefits would look like. Offers would be made by Alucion on July 10th. Employees then would have a couple of days to decide, "Do I accept the Alucion offer? No, I really want the transition assistance plan." So they make that decision. And then on July 15th, the transition assistance plan, the open election period would start. There's a 45-day period by law for that. So employees would have that option then to look at the transition assistance plan itself and then make their election if they haven't chosen. July 29th would be the first day of the contract with Alucion. They would assume full managed service responsibilities. And then July 31st would be the last day that our IT staff would be WCC employees. That's the calendar for that. Now, as I said, there's also activities for the board that we're recommending. In addition to this initial proposal today, that we're also recommending that there be a special board for meeting on June 4th. And the purpose that is two-fold. One is to invite comments from the public, from the campus community, board to board here first hand, and also for Alucion to present to the board, for you to start to get to know Alucion and who they are at that June 4th meeting. We also would recommend the following week, the week of June 10th, that there be two activities. One is that in smaller board sessions, groups of two or three, then you spend time with You spend the time, much time as deep as you need to spend with them. And also, we also would like you to have time to spend with other Michigan community colleges that are using the Alucion managed service services, for you to talk to their presidents, to talk to their boards, and really just vet out that process during that week of June 4th. With those activities then, that the recommendation is that we would then bring back to the board the proposal for the Alucion contract, if the board is ready for that. So those are those activities. So in summary, again, the role of technology throughout the college is significant, it's complex, it's dynamic, and it's crucial in support of student success. The college's ability to adequately support this technology environment has really been challenged, both in pace and in competition for contemporary IT professionals. The mission of our college is not to be an elite provider of technology resources. That's not our mission. We need to leverage those firms, that that is their mission. That this partnership with Alucion, it really is going to afford WCC a strong opportunity to leverage the resources that we have just in a really cost-effective manner. We've seen 25% in growth in four years. Any other model that we looked at would say it's going to have to keep growing a lot more. Under this model, at worst, it stays the same, and then potentially there's some cost savings. And last but not least, our staff, that we know this is going to have an impact. That's not to be diminished, belittled in any way. But a key element of our recommendation is to do our very best to propose to the board a way to help our staff, either with a job with a leading IT firm in higher education or a meaningful transition assistance plan to help them along with their careers. End of my presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments at this time? Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question. With this contract, is there like a break-in period so you can see how they're going along with what they said they're going to be doing? Maybe I'm not saying it right, but you know, just, you know, like in six months or something like that, you know, are they still on track or they're doing what they say they're going to do?
There's that, there's that community of objectives, deliverables, performance objectives that we can lay out that are in the heart of the contract, which then we'll be able to use as a basis to work back to the campus and to the program.
Okay. And my other question is, excuse me, the staff people, I know they have to make a decision, but I mean, that's a big decision to make. I know myself, when I worked with Washtenaw County itself, it was very traumatic because I was one of them, but other people were being, they were decreasing the service load. And luckily for me, I was in management, but I was still able to work out my departure. But some people had difficulty in doing that, and I just want to make sure that these people, I mean, I saw what you have here, and I think that's, I've never seen anything like this. And I've worked in all different types of jobs in the real world, and I've never seen this proposal like this. I just want to make sure that people will have someone to talk to with their fears, and that's through the HR department or somebody to go through this transition with them, because it is something, you know, it's not, yes, it is great that they're going to get 100% of their salary, if they're, whatever it is. I mean, really, I've never heard of that before, and all this other that goes with it. But it still is a transition, it still is a mindset, and it still is fear, and what about this and what about that? And I think those are the things that, I'm quite sure you thought about it, but it's just a matter to make sure that the employees understand that this, a service is going to be available for them to discuss some of their fears and anxieties so that they can work through this before making their final decision of what they're going to do.
There's two elements that we try to make. Employee assistance program is a really important part.
Right, right.
That can provide the psychological, the emotional, and just the sheer training and support. The second part is with right management around careers. Consider that folks can start to engage around their future once they decide to not take the offer with Alucion, and to begin with professionals who can help them get to a potential next step in their career, and to be with their peers in that process, and that's what right management requires.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that, because too often, in any type of business venture institutions or whatever, it's there and you just have to take it, no matter what it is. You don't want it, too bad, bye. So I think, for me, I see this as a great opportunity for a new, fresh life for them, whatever they want to do, you know, because a lot of people don't have that opportunity. And I think this is a great opportunity. That's just my opinion. Go ahead.
So I'm wondering, we're talking, we're looking forward at a five, contract in excess of $5 million a year for five years with Alucion, a private sector contractor of services. Are we kind of tied to them because we've previously made the choice to go with the Banner system that they're, that they've marketed? Are there other systems and providers out there serving the educational arena that might be an alternative to look at? I'm not saying we should look at it, I'm just wondering if there's some, if we're kind of, because we bought into Banner, now we're tied into Alucion as the primary developer and provider of that system.
There certainly are other software ERP providers for higher education. The college may be considering back in 1999 to go to, I think, that has been a strong choice for the college. If the college were to decide to look at other systems, in and of itself, that is a two-to-three-year process to assess, decide, and then to, the cost to do that, we've looked at in the past, is anywhere from $4 to $5 million just in transition costs alone. And then during that time of transition, you take your best and your brightest across the college, for users along with IT, and dedicate them nothing but to that transition. So the opportunity cost on top of that is safe. At this point in time, we believe this, for all those reasons, is the right ERP system for the college now. In the future, that may not be the case, but I think that would be something that would take many, many years of planning, deliberation. So I think for a five-year contract, this creates a really great window for us to first find out how well to leverage our current system, because that's one of the key things that we don't do very well. Honestly, we are only getting about 20 to 30%, about 30% of the value out of our current ERP system today, and we owe it to ourselves, since we've already gone through that transition in years ago, to really put our efforts in how to leverage what we have now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other questions or comments. I'd like to entertain a motion to recess the meeting, to go into closed session to discuss periodic personnel evaluation. Do you hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Support.
Support. Any discussion? And Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Plonby?
Yes.
Vice Chair Milken?
Yes.
Treasurer Davis?
Yes.
Secretary Deverdy?
Yes.
Trustee Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Landau?
Yes.
Trustee Amon?
Yes.
All right, we are recessed. Thank you.